Let me call you back there, right?
I see you asked. Hi!
Hey.
Hello, hello! How you doing? Good, how are you? How's your face?
Hello. I got my tablet, I got my tablet. It's low on juice.
One, one?
Because I forgot to charge it.
Oh, that's all right.
Testing, testing.
Testing, how are you, my buddy?
One, good.
Testing. Oh, don't trip over my bag.
One, two?
All yours.
Right, let's see.
Have a seat. Don't get too drunk.
He's too much.
One.
I tried, I updated it.
Okay.
And I tried to put the password into it. And she got nothing.
Play key?
She got it. That's Italian.
But I thought Outlook was already installed in there.
It doesn't look like it, I don't know. I liked it too, you can do it through the mail app. I think it looks better.
That's fine.
If you get the Outlook app.
That's fine. I thought I had it already. My bad, you see, there's certain things with computers.
Yeah.
I know enough to get me in trouble. Especially if you see my Facebook posts. Or we're not gonna go there. You know how many accounts I got on Facebook?
No.
Because I keep going and doing them.
He's double trouble, you know?
What I find amazing is how, like, every major platform, every major platform I would feel like has like a six to eight year lifespan?
I got three Facebook accounts. Because I get thrown out of it. I get, get, keep going and doing them.
Podium, oh, okay, podium, podium. This is podium.
My maternal parents' original last name before it got changed.
Okay. I'm not gonna be that close. Okay.
And like, I only use them to just steeple on things. But like, my main one...
See, my problem is, I like to start trouble on Facebook. I just love it. And people are so gullible and so easy to piss off. It's fun.
So you do your password here? My dad gets it. He gets it. He's got like three different people to cry at. Like, no official idioticist ever talks back to him on the thing. Because they know they could lose. They just, they just quietly complain about it to me. Or they complain about...
Anthony, turn on, oh, there you go. Why is it like trippy like that? Oh, because I'm so close.
Alright, you're good. We're all good.
Now who's this young man?
Oh, my name is Anthony Yedder. And I'm on the resolution tonight.
Oh, how about that? Oh, hi, Anthony. My name is Hope Vasvia. I sing.
Karen Clark.
Karen Clark.
So, Hope, do you have any relatives named charity in Queens?
I have a sister, Fay. And a sister, Cindy.
I'm sitting here.
Very cool.
If you liked her, absolutely. Yes, I want you to unless you need it elsewhere.
She's gonna give Carlos report tonight. She's gonna give Carlos report tonight. Just reminding everybody to pay the bill to text.
Okay. Acting receiver.
Yes. She could do everything.
You're up, you can do everything else, why not that?
She's excellent. We love her. We love this Ruby.
I saw my, I saw Lily's talk last night.
Saw what?
Lily's talk apart.
Oh, you did, eh?
I liked it, I get it though. I get, oh, it's weird. But I thought it was...
It is a weird story, though.
Yeah, it's definitely weird. It was good, like, it was a good production.
Tell Ruby that that's a show that a lady hated.
Yeah, I didn't like it either. But, you know, you seem to enjoy it, so.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely weird. But I feel like the production was bad, so.
That's, yeah.
Yep, um, yeah, so this is a sidebar on this.
And who's this Miss Jill is here?
Were you missing a chair?
Hello. Oh, you almost got a chair because Pam didn't have a chair last time.
So is Pam sitting here?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay.
Pam is sitting wherever Ruby puts the sound.
Yes, it would seem.
Hello, Mr. Randy. All right, let me get it.
Is this, this meeting?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. It's in the other room, okay? In the meet, uh, the meeting room.
Yeah, I bought this six years ago. I've only, I've only used a big deal of...
Does that have a label? All right, oh, I like those.
No, so Dan just asked me to put instructions on it, so. And I said, you know what? I bought this sometime in 2019. I bought it as a product ease.
Where do mine?
You got any more questions? Two?
Staples.
Good.
Oh, yes, they...
Just, always good to get big. Always good to be transparent. I didn't, I didn't reach back on it. I just thought that my rationale was going forward, since...
Oh.
I agree that it's a good thing and it'll probably be who we are.
I'm supposed to match, though. I don't know.
See if anybody else is out there who's, uh...
I know, so, you know, oh, you know why? Because I'm here.
Well, you're always there, though.
Yeah, we have six. We should have six. We have a park commission meeting, we have six commissioners. That chair is a different chair.
I'm not, no.
So we're missing one chair.
I know, let's see.
Ruby?
One, two, three, four, five, six. I seen six chairs.
Six chairs is good. We have enough chairs.
Tommy appears to be in a mood.
Tommy's, he's calling a coffee. He said he's been in bad mood all week, I saw.
I think caffeination.
We have enough chairs.
Do you care that doesn't match?
No, well, you might as well, that's, that one goes in that office, so we can switch them.
Wow. The demand for matching chairs.
Everything has...
I don't know why.
Well, I mean, not for anything, that does look better.
I have no idea why we...
Who knows, they rearrange the furniture here.
We rearrange it all the time.
Oh, wow, okay. There he is, Tommy Toons.
And he's fueled on fire.
Good evening, everybody. It's the fourteenth, a Sunday or Saturday?
Fourteenth is Saturday.
It's actually more like same day.
Tomorrow's the thirteenth, tomorrow's Friday is the thirteenth.
Oh, Friday and the thirteenth. I have to remember to bring my, uh, recycling to the party.
That's right, recycling. The shredder bill.
Oh, yes. Oh, you mean like bigger things?
No, 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 no. Shred, shred it.
Oh, the shredder.
Yeah, people just wanna get shredded.
Okay.
I have a big, I have a big box of stuff.
Oh, yeah. I bought it too, in Waltham, near, they have like computer e-waste and make shredder.
What are, what are you, I'm just curious, like old tax returns or...
Things like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I've been cleaning off my desk. I have a box, I have a box legal size, you know, about this big, this wide.
My feeling is that's what a basement is for.
I, I just, I got so much shredding I gotta do, I gotta go to every, I just got paper.
No, what you do...
I'm gonna shred, that's exactly, that's just it.
I have too much to shred at home. I have a shredder.
Yeah, I have a shredder.
But whatever I do is go through, I still have a whole step of it as a trustee.
Oh, wow, yeah.
You know, when I...
Like I said, always planning on...
Oh, it's kind, yeah. If you have them in order, you're playing.
I think you're probably in the first place.
Yep, it's already on demand, set to go.
I found newspapers from when, um, they got that, who was the guy? I'm getting in my head and, never, um, the man they got, the sales got in, uh...
Your wife, from where?
Oh, I can't even think.
From a local or...
No, the man over in the eastern country. Wait, no, it's...
Were you talking about recent event?
No, no, it's a couple of years ago.
And what happened?
I can't remember, I was looking at his face today.
And what happened?
And what happened? Where were they, they...
The sound card was dedicated to...
Just give us more information, I can piece it together. So someone, what, what was the bad?
It was the horse.
Oh!
First word, first word. Between three.
Oh, it's Tommy Ben Hunt, but that's not here.
No, I said it was White East.
Oh, White East.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Who was the other guy that was like... This year was out like...
Okay, so, I...
I'm asking...
Saddam Hussein.
I think it was.
Who, Gaddafi?
Oh, oh, Saddam, I thought Saddam Hussein.
I had all those, it was pretty lame saying, and I said, why, I looked it up on there. From the dirt, who is that?
I had a periodically about the Westwood News, and now, you know, it's sometimes like, this pile for both.
Well, maybe they're in Britain, maybe.
Oh, they picked them today with the recycling.
I think I know this by.
You know, you know, it's a problem, I don't know.
It's always good to have something in front of you. Whenever I was arguing for it, even though I, I always had it written down, just in case, in case I choked.
Don't you think? I mean, I can never, if you, if you wanted to quote some, something that's said in the Westwood News, for political reason or for anything else. And you say, well, I wanna go, you can't, it's like, it's like they're washed away.
There you go.
I mean, if the New York Times stopped publishing print editions, you have everything on that.
Yeah, so, so it's enough.
Oh, look at this, look at the shades and everything.
Fresh off vacation.
Wow.
Gal shirts, sunglasses, kissed by the sun.
Oh, yeah, did you make a copy, did you, did you bring the copy of yours, because I left the office at, like, one thirty, okay, let me get it from my email.
Did you bring them over here? Uh.
Dave, before I forget, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get here, please. Would you talk, would you talk to Carl, when I come to that?
Oh, yeah, I'll talk to him tonight, I thought she'd be here.
Carl lives, Carl, Carl's away all week.
She'll be back tomorrow at work, yeah. I think it's.
I think it's the Asian year collective. No, you know, it was funny when you said like, you should, you know, anything regarding movies, that'd be, you know, I, I.
What are your feelings about the shed, that we had a budget for two years, and then we went into it for all these stupid electric vehicles and terminals that we had to leave. About installing them properly, having a building to have them properly, uh, sheltered. I, well, we're spent, we, I'm, I think, you know, we, we have it in the budget for two years. If we have a budget, and if we have it in the budget, I mean, and we're.
I'm.
All right, five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council meeting of June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded and in the best interest for all residents. Amen.
Please call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Counselperson Pamela Jaffin here and in my normal position. Counselperson Jill Axelrod here.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Counselperson Randy Selyer and Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Here. Adoption of minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. If there are additions, corrections, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our first item is a presentation of the Rye Town twenty twenty-four audit by Jeff Shaver, partner in O'Connor Davies. And also with him is his alter ego, Scott Olley.
Thanks, everyone. Sorry, I'm newly freshly arrived from Saratoga and Albany from meetings today, so. And there was a nice stuck eighteen-wheeler on the throughway that delayed my arrival to like ten minutes ago, so. There's what you get. So, anyway, whatever. So, tonight, Jeff is here to present to you the results of the audit that PKF O'Connor Davies conducted for the town of Rye for the fiscal year that ended December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. He will take you through a highlight of how you did financially this past year. Jeff?
Thank you, Scott. In the interest of time, I'll skip through the agenda and just talk generally about the audit. The audit is complete. We've issued our report. We've issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's also referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive. What that means is the numbers, the figures in the financial statements are complete and accurately stated in all material respects, and the note disclosures are complete and consistent with the previous year. There were no material weaknesses in internal controls noted during the conduct of the audit. We would be required to tell you if there were, and no instances of fraud came to our attention, nor did we find any during the audit. Overall, the audit went smooth. We were provided with all the documents we asked for. I think in timing-wise, this may be the earliest presentation we've been able to do, so we were able to get everything timely and promptly and get through everything and issue the reports. I believe it was actually issued last month in May in time for us to be here to present to you. So, I'd just like to thank the Finance Department and the Town Administrator and everyone that helped, you know, pull everything together in a timely manner, and it was certainly a pleasure working with everyone. In terms of, we'd like to talk about auditors' responsibilities versus management and the board's responsibilities. So, it's really management's responsibilities for selecting and implementing appropriate accounting policies and fairly presenting the financial statements in accordance with the US GAAP, establishing and maintaining effective internal controls, compliance with laws and regulations, providing all the documents that we request as auditors, and setting the proper tone at the top. On the flip side, we as auditors are responsible for what I mentioned on the previous slide, you know, essentially rendering the opinion on the financial statements and making the board aware of any, you know, significant findings that we found during the course of the audit. In terms of the financial results, this is a summarized snapshot of the general fund schedule of revenues and expenditures compared to the budget. I will go into some further detail in the next slides. In terms of revenues, the original budget anticipated seven million twelve thousand dollars to be collected in revenues, while the actual revenues were six million three hundred ninety-six thousand, a shortfall of approximately six hundred fifteen thousand. I'll highlight on the next slide how, you know, how that happened. On the expenditure side of the budget, seven million four hundred forty-eight thousand was anticipated to be spent. The actual expenditures, six million seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, some six hundred fifty-nine thousand less than what was anticipated to be spent. The revenues less the expenditures yielded a deficiency of the revenues over expenditures of about three hundred ninety-two thousand. In addition, there was a budgeted transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, which is referred to here as another financing source and use. And that was budgeted at fifty thousand, and the transfer was made at that fifty thousand. So, after taking the three hundred ninety-two thousand, less the fifty thousand, brings you to a net change in your fund balance of four hundred forty-two thousand. That's a decrease. The beginning of the year fund balance was five million two hundred thirty-three thousand. The end of year fund balance, four million seven hundred ninety-one thousand. Keep in mind, if you look in the first column, the original budget, you'll see after the other financing uses of fifty thousand, there's a balancing figure. That's four hundred eighty-six thousand. That's the amount that Town Board anticipated utilizing in the budget. So, that was the appropriation of fund balance in the budget. The plan called for a decrease in the fund balance of four hundred eighty-six thousand, but you did a little better than what was anticipated, net of the revenues and expenditures, a forty-three thousand dollar surplus. So, probably the closest to your budget you've ever come, at least since I've been working with the town, but you, you know, very, very close to doing what you anticipated to do when you adopted the budget. So, the decrease in fund balance was slightly better than what was anticipated at four hundred forty-two thousand. Some details on the revenue side. You can see there's the total on the bottom, seven million twelve thousand on the budget with the six million three hundred ninety-six thousand of actual. The largest revenue source of the town is the property tax levy, budgeted at three million eight hundred nineteen thousand, while the actual revenue is three million four hundred and seventy thousand. The difference between the budgeted real property taxes and the actual is caused by the timing of the collection of the taxes receivable. So, if you don't modify the cruel accounting, governmental accounting, if you don't collect a tax within sixty days after the fiscal year-end, you can't recognize the revenue. So, essentially what that means, the shortfall means the taxes receivable, delinquent taxes receivable grew year over year. And we do see fluctuations that go in positive some years, negative going some years, depending on how the taxes receivable come in from year to year. I will also highlight a significant positive variance in the use of money in property category, and that's mostly your interest income. So, the interest rates did stay favorable during the fiscal year. The budget was three hundred and fifty thousand, and you actually collected six hundred and fifty-four thousand, some three hundred thousand greater than what was anticipated. That was offset by the fines and forfeitures of approximately two hundred thousand less than what was anticipated, and finally, state aid at two hundred and sixty-nine thousand less than the budget. The state aid category, most of that's the mortgage tax revenue, which came in less than what was anticipated and also less than the previous year, as I think we've all seen, you know, kind of slowing in the real estate market or at least with the number of transactions that's been happening. We have seen that at most of the municipalities we work with. And that's kind of the, you know, the highlights of how you, you know, how the details went on the revenue side of the budget.
May I ask a question, Eric?
Sure.
Just, as a general matter, real property taxes were about just under ten percent less received, it's less than budgeted. Is that disturbing or is that just an anomaly based on timing issues? Because the ten percent shortfall on its face suggests something could off.
It's not alarming in the case of the town of Rye. Because, and I'll explain, and the comptroller I know has spoken about this many times in the past. It's not just the town of Rye taxes you're collecting. You're collecting for all the schools in the town and the county and the villages, mostly the school. It's really mostly the school money, and so it's really the taxes receivable related to all those entities. So, the tax levy that the town collects, I don't have the number offhand, but I think it's somewhere in the two hundred million dollar range. It's a large number, much larger than your total budget. So, a ten percent swing in your real property tax revenue is not the same as a ten percent swing in all the taxes receivable. So, three fifty is actually not that big of a number when you look at all the collections that you do. Does that make, does that help?
It does.
That is an unfortunate thing in governmental accounting because you're collecting for so many other entities, and the dollars are somewhat, the dollars are large. A small swing in those taxes receivable could have a big effect on your budget, and you're kind of, you know, you're seeing that in that line.
And the other thing, in Westchester County only, I believe, is the only county
It is.
in New York State out of the sixty-two counties, I believe, that require the local governments, the local towns under the county, to be responsible for the collection of the property taxes. In all the other sixty-one counties, it's the county that's on the hook for any uncollected taxes, and they, the county, would make those towns whole a hundred percent. You would have no variance. You would collect everything, and they would be responsible. They're on the hook for it. So, Westchester is unique in that regard.
It's just as an aside, when I have meetings with other supervisors, we have periodic meetings with all the supervisors of the state through the Association of Towns, and they do not have this problem. So, when we bring up problems with state legislature, when I talk to the council for the Association of Towns, we are a unique situation in Westchester compared to all of the other towns in the state of New York that do not have this problem. When it comes to collections or in REMS, we do in REMS, as you well know. Jeff does the in REMS for us, and Dave is certainly well aware of all of it. The other towns in the state of New York don't have this problem at all. It's only Westchester County. So, it's just an interesting aside. And I mention periodically joking with county officials that we should change it, and they look at me askance because this is one of the reasons Westchester can maintain a triple-A bond rating because we and the other towns guarantee the county collection.
So, Westchester has the benefit of having that on their real property tax line, a variance of zero. The town of Rye does not have that luxury, and neither do the other towns in Westchester.
Neither does the school district or the villages.
That is correct. Okay. Some more details on the expenditure side of the budget. You can't fit all your expenditures on one page, so we did, there's some summary here. You can see the total budget at the bottom of the slide, seven million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, while the actual expenditures were six million eight hundred thirty-nine thousand. The variance is mainly in the general government support category. That includes all the general administrative functions of the town, so. Tax collections, clerks, supervisor, justice court, all those type costs are within the larger category of general government support, and that was a savings, you know, in those various departments of about five hundred thousand dollars underspending of the budget. There was also an underspending in the debt service part of your budget on the interest category as there was bond anticipation, no interest budgeted at about a hundred and ten thousand, but you didn't issue the band in time to have to pay the interest expense. So, that falls to savings. You will have that interest expense in fiscal twenty-five, so it's just really a timing of when that will fall. And, you know, that's how you achieve that, those savings, six hundred fifty-nine thousand. Okay, so what does it all boil down to? It boils down to your fund balance. You can see at the end of twenty twenty-four, general fund fund balance, four million seven hundred ninety-one thousand. It's comprised of these various categories. We have non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. Non-spendable relates to prepaid expenditures to indicate that funds have been spent during the fiscal year, but they really relate to the next fiscal year. They're earmarked to show you can't spend them again. The restricted amount is what's remaining from the premium on debt that you issued several years ago. As part of the budget process, you've been taking that into revenue. It's down to a very minimal amount left for twenty twenty-five. The assigned fund balance, that's the appropriation of fund balance for the next fiscal year or twenty twenty-five fiscal year. So, the five hundred seventy-nine thousand of fund balance has been earmarked to balance the twenty twenty-five budget. The unassigned is really what's left over from all, from the total fund balance after you subtract the other categories, and that's what we refer to as unassigned fund balance. It's not earmarked, encumbered. It's available for discretion at the use of the board. That number is, your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance is still a strong number, four point one million dollars. Keep in mind, as we talked about before, the real property tax collections, every year you have to make good on those taxes to the county and to the schools, and that requires a significant cash outlay. And if you haven't collected the taxes yet, you really have to use your surplus in order to make those payments. So, the fund balance that you have provides a cushion for you to be able to make those payments without issuing any tax anticipation notes or some sort of debt to make those payments. So, your fund balance amount does look very strong, but when you factor in the, you know, several million dollars that you have to pay to the schools every year, it starts to look a little smaller. So, just something I'd like to point out here, especially at the town of Rye. With that said, you know, you're still at about fifty-three percent of your total budget in terms of fund balance, which is considered very strong. This is a summary of the bonded debt that's outstanding. Ten million seven hundred sixty-five thousand. There's two debt issuances out there currently, one from twenty seventeen and the other from twenty twenty-one. There is also, not on the slide, there is also the bond anticipation note that I mentioned before in the amount of two point three five million. So, the total between the bonds here, ten million seven sixty-five, and the band brings you to a total debt outstanding of ten point seven seven million. Those are all the prepared remarks I have for today. If there's any questions, additional questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them or comments or anything you want me to go through in greater detail in the financial statements. I'd be happy to do that as well.
All right, so our total outstanding debt is ten million seven sixty-five.
Bonds.
That's what I meant. I said debt.
Yes, you said debt.
Right. All right. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Any questions on Facebook? Identify yourself, please, Debbie.
I'm Debbie Friedman from Rybrook. I was just wondering, when you look at the numbers versus budget, do you ever put in like the prior year too also so you can see it all together?
So, I did on the slides. The financial statements themselves are single-year presentations, so no, on the financial statements. For purposes of today, if you look up here, you'll see the twenty twenty-three amounts. I can't fit all, I can't fit all the budgets on here because it just becomes...
No, not the budgets, the actual.
The actual, and in the last column, you'll see the actuals. So, that's really for the board to see and the public to see. It's kind of in addition to what's in the audit document, and you'll see it again on the revenues. So, in those two slides, we did do that prior presentation, and I did it with the fund balance as well, so twenty-four and twenty-three.
And going back further than twenty twenty-three, is that usually accessible at some place?
I haven't. I just didn't do it.
We have all the numbers, Debbie, if you need them. We have all the numbers.
They're all on the website as well. Part of yours, one of your reports.
Thank you.
All right. If there are other questions, I'll thank you. We'll see you again next year. Unless something happens in between. Just as a housekeeping measure, resolution accepting the town audit by O'Connor Davies. May I have a motion and a second unless there are other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is Brian hiding in the back. Brian is going to report on our first EcoFest. Brian is head of our Sustainability Committee. Am I correct with that?
I don't think so.
Or some committee.
I'm going to be my honorary co-chair.
Co-chair. Whatever.
You're also our, you have an interesting title. You are our...
Climate coordinator.
No, there's an actual title for you, but I'm literally going to be naming you co-chair at the next chance I get.
When Brian came on board, we had a resolution. I have no recollection of what that resolution said he was. We gave you some kind of a title.
Okay, fancy title.
Climate smart liaison, I think it was. But yes, you are, in my head, definitely the leading co-chair to the sustainability.
Do you ask where sustainability's are?
Yeah.
Sounds more official.
I like simpler. Feel like it's more down there.
All right. All right, Brian, tell us what this is about. We all were at EcoFest.
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Some of us were.
Good majority.
Yeah, most of the board was there. Thank you very much for coming along. So, yeah, this was our first EcoFest. It was made possible in large part thanks to a generous donation in the memory of Ashley Weldy. So, thank you very much to Jack and the rest of her family for that. So, we, I'll just go to the next page. So, we had twenty-five local organizations participating, ranging from the Clay Arts Center to Greenworks, which is a company that sells electric landscaping equipment, to the Westchester Children's Museum, to the county bus service. So, we got, you know, one of their beeline buses on site for people to take a look at. Right here in the pictures, you can see we had Fiddlehead's Cooking Studio, which operates out of this mansion every once in a while, and we had Meals on Main Street bring one of their electric vehicles by. So, we got a lot of people along, and I think pretty much everybody had a pretty good time. We had about two hundred visitors throughout the day. I canvassed the area to do head counts and estimate from that. It might sound like more than it actually is, you know. We're, it's a decent start, I think, and I think that it gives us a good chance to springboard for next year.
Do you want to note that our first years of the Holiday Festival and also Trunk or Treat started out about two or three hundred people, and they've continued to grow since then?
Yeah, so I think it's a, I think it's a great chance, especially for kids, to get out and start learning about this. But we had stuff on offer for people of all ages. Yeah, so it's not that long of a presentation this time. I have some more photos from the event. Violia was also sponsoring the event, so thank you to them. You can see at the top right their Beaver Bailey, who's their mascot, who is posing with the kids at our photo board. So, yeah, I mean, I think it was a pretty successful first go at it, and I think with time it can grow into a really great fair for everybody. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, we definitely had a learning curve, but thank you, Brian. I mean, the amount of work you did was Herculean to pull this off and following right up on our, you know, Community Service Day last month, basically, very short month ago.
Yeah.
But it was interesting. We got a lot of through traffic. You know, we definitely saw the, you were saying before, the kids on the playground were there, and Greg DiMosselli from the elementary school, BNP Elementary School, was running a sustainable drone circle, and that just, a lot of families in and over. Ruby manned the town desk the entire day, and I think you got a lot of interplay.
And is Sunburn.
And is Sunburn still there. But no, I mean, Ruby, the amount of work you did as well was phenomenal, so thank you. I just think next year we'll have more of a timeline. I think that's what we came up with.
Yeah, and earlier today, I met with Ruby and with Sue Hoffman about setting out a specific timeline for how we're going to get the word out and having a game plan for all of our deliverables several months in advance so that we can get our advertising up around the town, basically. So, I think that's the big hurdle that we face this year, and I think we have a solution for it for next year.
You know, anything that's new is going to take a little time.
Yeah.
You know, to build up, and like Pam said, it's, you know, with the other festivals that we have, it just, over the time, it builds up, and you learn to get the word out in different areas. And I think it'll be good. It was nice. I was there for, what, about an hour or so because I had other engagements to go to, and, you know, helping set up and stuff was nice.
It was really lovely, like the feeling was filled with family activities. So, people were able to wander in and plant with the friends of Crawford Park or sign a declaration for a healthy garden. Westchester Children's Museum brought an entire exhibit. They've been a great partner to us across Pride and sustainability events, so.
We also had a board up for Rye Town Park for the suggestions for Indigo River Consultants for sustainability that we got a grant for. So, I mean, I think it was, for a first effort, I think it was very successful. Brian, I want to thank you especially for a great job. Ruby, always putting forth the effort, and Pam, chairing it. You guys did a wonderful job, really did.
Debbie and Sue, we're, once again, small and mighty, but, you know, I think on the home end, Chris, I did help you as well, so. Small but mighty, and we'll just keep growing.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a presentation from H and H. That's Hardisty and Hanover, formerly FP Clark, regarding a comprehensive plan for Crawford Park. Is Neil on?
Somewhere near.
Hi, Neil. Okay, let me just, the genesis of this was... Okay, let me just, the genesis of this was, we were considering some things at Crawford, and Jill came up with the idea, well, we really should do a comprehensive plan for Crawford Park. So I reached out to, to Sarah Brown of, I'm going to keep saying FP Clark, I'm sorry, Neil.
That's fine.
And they put together a plan that we're going to consider. We're not going to act on it today. And why don't you go, go through that for us and let the whole community see what, what we're working on.
Sure. Thanks for this opportunity to, this prospect of potentially working for you. The, the scope of work is where I'd just like to start. I'm, I don't need to project it, I'm just going to talk, talk a few, few parts of it. I think, you know, we, we, we suggest calling it a comprehensive vision plan, so, you know, so people can have that word in their, in their minds when, you know, when they're thinking about Crawford Park, you know, okay, what is, what, what do we, what do I envision for Crawford Park in the future? So that's just a small thing I want to, I want to suggest for the type of level of engagement we'd like to have people, to do with people about the park. The, I think, in the, in the first paragraph, we just set out, you know, what, what this assignment is about. You know, we want to engage town officials, staff, and park users in discussions about the current state of the park and their visions for the, for the park, you know, I think five to 10 years into the future. And the result will be a kind of a vision plan that will narrate and visualize through a concept plan, photos, perhaps an illustrative, illustrative rendering to get people excited about the park's future design and programming possibilities. And I think I'll just summarize real briefly the, the kind of the main steps in this process. I think the, the first, step one, which is project initiation and discussion, that's really about, you know, that, that will be our first meeting with town, park commission officials, whoever you think should be, you know, on the table for the start of this project. And we really want to just define for ourselves the goals of this plan. And then also, another important part is the, some of the guiding principles for the future of the park. And that could also include potential, you know, parameters, you know, you know, we want to envision the future of the park. What else, you know, there also may be some parameters that we need to place on the vision, whether it has to do with cost or just, you know, you know, whatever, whatever the factors may be. And so that's what we'd want to get to at our first meeting, some of the substantive parts of that task. We'd want to talk about public engagement strategies and methods, what's been done in the past, what's been most effective. We certainly want to be able to use the best means possible that you've used in the past. And if there's any additional methods, we can, we can consider that as well. And we'd also want to speak with the park director, grounds, facilities, and event coordinators, you know, hear from the staff who works in the park. Task two is more, kind of the, more of the base mapping. And that's essentially for really just getting down on paper, really everything that's really critical in terms of the landscape, easements and other restrictions, where the parking areas are, where there's drainage issues, what the soils are. And so, you know, we'll, we'll have this as a, as a whole record, and we'll certainly use, use some of these, use the, the kind of the base maps to inform and be a part of the actual concept plan that we develop. The, we'd want to look at, oh, sorry, we'd want to look at some of the constraints, environmental, like I just said, you know, drainage, are there flooding issues in certain areas, are there regulatory and infrastructure considerations? And I think we'd want to get right down into the, into the park and actually go physically in the park and for ourselves, document what's going on in the park and how facilities are used. I'm just going to stop there for a second to see if anybody had any questions.
Well, I think some of the, some of the work that you're proposing, preparing a base map inside Inverdale, we already have a lot of that. We have a topographical, we've, we've had to do a lot of things because of grants that we have applied for and, and received. So some of that's, some of that information, if not all of it, is, is readily available without reinventing the wheel.
Excellent. Excellent, that's, that's very good, yeah. That's what we, we hope for, that, that you'd be able to have that information, so, thanks. In terms of, you know, getting to the heart of, of things, really reaching out, it's not just engaging people, but how do you promote this, this process to park users? You know, you're talking about the, it's a little complex because we're talking about a number of towns that, people, a number of towns that use, use the park. And we want to be able to do the best job within, you know, within relatively, you know, realistic means to promote the project. And, you know, our, our suggestion is to use, I, I saw, I, I realize there's a Crawford Park Mansion website, and there, you know, I mean, I don't need to get into, we don't need to get into details of what the, which websites are which not, but I think we want to leverage the existing social media websites, mailing lists that you already use to promote the process, and we would provide the language and images to the appropriate people to have those posted. We would, if you tend to have other media outlets that you tend to post information or meeting notices, that sort of thing, and we would prepare language for that. And I think, I think the other part of promotions is posters. We'd want to have something visual and be able to place in tasteful locations, appropriate posters that would announce the, the project and with a QR code and that sort of thing so people can get more information about what this project's about, what, what events are coming up. And then when we get to the actual engagement, we're suggesting having a, a brief survey, five to ten questions perhaps, and we're focusing on the parks, the current usage patterns as well as their ideas for the park. This, we would also want to meet people in the field, so when we're doing those observations that I mentioned about the, in the previous task about how people are using the park, we could, you know, we, we could create a sort of a, what we call a pop-up visioning event where essentially we, we reach out to park users on certain days, maybe a weekend day and a weekday, over a certain number of hours to just talk to people about their, how they use the park and how they would enhance the park, what they would like to see in the park in the future. And then the main event would be the Crawford Park, a, a visioning workshop, where we'd get together people in a, in a, during an event where we start to present and discuss, you know, based on all the observations that we've done, preliminary ideas for the vision plan and get into a discussion with people about that. And then that goes on to the actual, you know, once we've, we've heard that, once we've met with people, we can advance that preliminary draft into a more proper draft of the comprehensive vision plan, which we submit to the town, which we discuss, and then that gets to the, to the final, to the final Crawford, Crawford Park plan. So, so that's the, the scope of work. And, you know, this is just based on our, you know, first, first pass. I, I personally have not been to Crawford Park, but, you know, as far as designing a process of engaging and promoting and engaging people, I think, you know, I've been do, I've been doing that for a long time, and, and I put together, you know, we put together some ideas for how to do that. But yeah, look for, are there, are there any questions or does it mean any more clarification on any aspect of, of this proposal?
Start from, any questions, Pam?
Yes, I mean, tons, but that's okay. Neil, knowing how hard it is to get people to interact, and you said you have a lot of experience drawing in, how do you plan on getting community stakeholders to talk to you, to open up to you?
Well, like I, one of the things that I like best is reaching people when they're least expecting it. So meaning, what I suggested here is that while we're doing our observations of the, of the park users on, on the weekend and the weekday, we want to actually just talk to people right then and there and get their ideas. Because often when you, we usually try to do a mix of typical workshops, and, you know, there's certainly people who always go to the workshops, but there's, you know, we obviously want to encourage everybody to come to, come to the workshops, but, you know, it's, it's hard depending on people's schedules. So getting people that are already at the park, talking to them is, is a good avenue for getting feedback from people who may not typically be involved in this type of process, but their input is important because they're a park user and have thoughts about the park. So that's, that type of, you know, pop-up, I call it, is a, is a good method for doing that. And, you know, during that process, you know, you get into a conversation with people about the project and what's coming up in the future, and, you know, you can tell them, make sure you go to the website. Sometimes we've, you know, we've produced little business cards or postcards that we can give people so they can have that and, and go to the website and, and see when the, when the workshop is. And, and so that's, that's helpful. It, it helps, it gives, you know, gives more of a chance of bringing people in who may not typically be engaged in civic matters.
I think being here would be very important. I noticed that in your plan, it says that you would attend three town meetings, but I would hope that the team would spend a ton of time on the ground at Crawford, especially in those moments where we're having gatherings, whether it's a concert on the lawn or an EcoFest or a Holiday Fest, to talk to people about what appeals them about coming to the park and capture an audience there. Not to do everything via social, not to do everything through a lens and a curtain, but just making sure that there's one-on-one contact with the actual users of the park and the people who aren't using the park. What are, you know, who in the community is not taking advantage of the park, who should be, and how do we find those people and appeal to them?
That's a good question about people who aren't using the park. And obviously, when you're at the park, you won't, you won't get that answer, but I liked your, I liked your idea, your suggestion of, you know, linking what we're doing with people with a specific event, because you know people are going to be there, rather than just picking, you know, a random weekday or, you know, a weekend day, but linking it with events because you'll be able to get more people by, that are, you know, because by nature of what it is, a, a big festival event. So I like that, I like that idea.
I don't care if you had a question, but... I noticed, you know, just the language of some of this, sort of projecting costs for adding things. What if we were coming at this, or some of us were coming at this, from a mindset that there is a possibility that the park is at capacity or being overused? And I think there's an inherent bias in sort of looking at people that are already using the facility. I'm looking at a much broader thing. I'm looking at the topography of the park, what's available at other parks close by. I'm not, we've already done a project where we asked people things, that's not really my main goal. It's more holistic, like what the park could actually tolerate in light of other facilities nearby, other things, like a really holistic approach to what we should do with this property, perhaps the intention of the use of the property in the first place, determining whether we're at capacity for certain things, the feasibility of creating new things that would require parking. I mean, I could go on.
Right.
Will there be any allowance for that, or is this just a, hey, people already at the park, what else do you want? Because that's...
Yeah, our proposal is, is, is not intended to do what you're looking for. Our proposal's intended to do the, kind of the, the kind of fundamental engagement work with people and the town about the future of the park, which is why I call it a vision plan. What you're talking about is going to be more, is more, you know, when you're looking at, you know, benchmarking or looking at what other parks are, have, and, you know, what is the capacity of the park and, and things like that, get into a, kind of the next level of, of, of a, you know, a park, a park plan, which starts to, you know, I think one of the questions, I don't recall if, if it was from, if it was from Gary or not, but it was about, you know, will, will we, will we be doing parking, any sort of parking assessments? And, you know, our, our proposal doesn't include that. Well, we certainly can do that, but our proposal doesn't include that because we're not doing, you know, you really have to get, be more precise in terms of the programming of the park and what you want to do to start to get into doing like parking analysis and, you know, how does, you know, investing or producing a certain amenity impact parking and how much parking does it need and can it fit and that sort of thing? So that's a, that's a next level, a deeper, that's a deeper project than what we, our proposal does.
Okay, so just to be clear, your proposal is really along the lines of what else we could add to the park, not, not really assessing whether that's maybe not a good idea or practically.
I don't think that that's exactly...
Right, as far as...
I know where you're getting at.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense.
But I think part of, part of what they're going to do is also to assess not only what, what can be added, but you used the word, are we at capacity? Because there are a number of residents who feel that we should not be adding a lot of activities. I mean, this whole thing started when we started to talk about pickleball courts. So I'm, there, there, there's an inherent tension among people who want more activities and people who want the same or even less activities.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's what the vision has to encompass.
Yeah, that was my desire, to have something that would sort of weigh all of those variables. Because again, you know, without, like if I'm at the park and someone says, hey, would you like pickleball? Great, that's fun. I mean, there's no assessment of what does that cost? How will we create parking? How will that impact on the foliage, the flora, the fauna of the park?
That's what Neil is saying, that that would be a next level to investigate that if we're going to do that.
I don't know how wise it is to continue to spend money to find out something we already may know to be true. But thank you so much for providing some clarity for me on that. Thank you.
All right.
Sure, sure.
Randy?
Right, right, and, and like I said, if, if your goal is to do, is to have something more deeper than, that, that's fine, I, I, we, we understand that. But I'm sorry, was there somebody else that was, that wanted to speak?
No, I was just saying, Jill asked a question. I think you said the word right, and then Gary started to talk, and I was wondering what your answer would be to Jill's question.
Which, which question of Jill's? Is it the, because I, which questions of Jill's? Was, was, her first question was about the, you know, you know, the types of things that she...
Can you repeat that?
Like looking at what other parks are doing and that sort of thing.
Can you echo?
Do you, is this something where you envision?
Yes, in, in reading your proposal, which is, is very thorough, and I appreciate it, I got the sense that this would be something, you know, and again, this is a broadened overview of what it would be, that we would be kind of seeking park users to tell us what else we want at the park, and then we would see how to make that happen. We have done that pretty much nonstop for eight years now.
Mm-hmm.
I am of the impression, and I believe that I'm speaking for constituents who have conveyed these feelings to me, that perhaps we need to put on breaks a bit. And again, I, I am not as environmentally aware as everybody else here, but I think when you have beautiful grounds and you continue to put things on them, you do alter the, the environment, you do alter the, the nature of the park... you do alter the, the environment, you do alter the, the nature of the park. And what happens is the more people that come, parking is a very real thing because if people can't park, they won't stay. And so I'm sort of of the belief that we need to take, as I said, this holistic look at the park where we say, based on these myriad factors, what, where's the limit? Where do we have to say? Right, exactly right. Before, we're actually, to the detriment of the park itself, we worked so hard to have the grounds be so beautiful. I can't tell you the number of trees and plants on Friends of Crawford Park have put in so much time and effort. Our staff, it's incredible. And I would hate to think that suddenly we have pickleball courts and parking for some people that don't want to drive to Stamford. But now we've also squashed a few plants that are never coming back, and we just have a different vibe.
Don't squash my milkweed.
Right, I'm sure, I know that with, you know, I know for all the people that work so hard on that and what it does for all the other plants that are here. So I just have hesitations if what you're telling me is that this is another way to confirm what else we can do at Crawford.
So basically, a different lens. You're looking at this survey, but taken from a different lens. So not what can the park offer in 10 years?
Yes, because I think we offer, I, I can't envision a scenario where there's something we don't offer. We're like an IMCA catering hall.
Yeah, rating what we offer, but also what is, like you said, the holistic sustainability of what the park can be.
Yes, and I apologize if I didn't make that clear earlier or if there was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, that was helpful.
Randy?
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, I guess another way of looking at it...
Microphone, Randy, pull one up.
I think this is, maybe I'm just repeating what Jill's saying, is within the scope of the research and work you're going to do, the possibility of reaching the conclusion that we think the best thing to do is do nothing for the reasons that Jill said. Is that as opposed to here's a list of five things that would be great? Because some people want them.
Right, I mean, ultimately, you know, the comprehensive plan is going to take into consideration, you know, where public input is leading. And that can go so many different ways. It could, there could be people that say, do not touch another tree in the park, you know? And that'll be their main principle of the park. Don't touch anything, keep it as it is. There'll be people who want pickleball and that sort of thing. So, and, you know, in our work, you'll, you'll certainly get all those inputs. And if you already, if you, if you've already been doing that, then, then I don't, you know, the value in what we, what we bring may not be more than you already have. You know, unless, if it is, then, you know, well, let's, they can tell them more. But ultimately, the, you know, and what I suggested in the beginning of the process is that, you know, the town, you know, we established some goals and some principles for the future of the park. You know, has some parameters. But ultimately, in the end, you know, this is, this is, you know, the, our client is, is, you know, is, is not necessarily the public, it's, it's the town. And, you know, it ultimately becomes your decision. The actual vision plan that results will have to, you know, be vetted and, you know, by, 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 and, and approved by, by the board or the commission. And so that's kind of, you know, that may result in the decision or the, you know, that, you know, there's nothing, you know, nothing more should be done if that's, if that's where that arrives. Because, you know, and that may be disappointing to the public because of, of, you know, the visioning work we've done. But if there's kind of a different conclusion that you come to, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessarily disappointment to the public. I mean, everybody, there'll definitely be somebody, a number of people are disappointed for whatever reason because of their main specific interest. But, you know, this is, this is how the, any sort of, you know, planning endeavor, you know, comes out in the end. It's, it's a negotiation and it's a, some people are, we try to do our best as we can to kind of, you know, bring together what are the best kind of concepts that are potentially feasible.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add, you know, one more factor. The, what, what I was looking for is really something that people could, you know, the vicissitudes of politics means that people who have the power may change. And I feel like if there's something documented for people to look at, then the varying opinions in terms of priority, instead of saying, well, this person now thinks this, it's like, oh, well, wait, we have this here, and we really have to look at these parameters. We happen to have an airport in Westchester County near residential homes and whatnot. And we're doing something similar in that there is this comprehensive plan of what the airport can actually accommodate in terms of number of flights, frequencies of, of flights, you know, all these kind of factors. So I think that was sort of what I was envisioning, this fact-based thing more than an opinion poll. So again, I just wanted to put that on the record, and I know Pam has questions as well.
I think that, that would be on a second stage. I think, just to elaborate on some of my thinking, there seems to be a view that all I'm thinking of is putting more activities in the park, and that's not true. Because some of the things that I've spoken to Vic and Debbie about are things like, how can we get more butterflies in the park? I read an article about hummingbirds. Can we, can we establish some kind of a flora where that would attract hummingbirds or other things? Can we, you know, are there places for other kinds of gardens? What kind of other, even can we introduce, you know, native animals that are, that are not there? I'm just talking about natural things as opposed to introducing activities. Because we're going even piecemeal there. We, we keep applying for grants and even outside of grants, we remove invasive vines and species. We do all of those things, and that could be part of it as well. We planted the mini forest, and that's part of it. We didn't do that with a plan. Somebody came up with an idea, I think it was probably Vic, to put the mini forest there.
It was Debbie, actually.
It might have been Debbie. Either way, could have been Ruby, who knows?
Putting it down.
But, but I am not wedded to the thought that we need to put more physical athletic activity. I'm wedded to the thought that we want to improve the park for the joyfulness of all the residents and the park users to go there, whatever that may encompass. You know, there may be places, for example, where we, we have an area where we want to set aside for music or something like that, or plays. There may be the possibility of putting a small amphitheater for those, for those kinds of things, or not. But that's what you need to look at and get people to come out and say, we, we like this idea, we don't like that idea. And ultimately, it's up to the town council to decide the direction that it would go in any of these cases. And we're not all going to be here in a couple of years. You know, there are such things as elections. So the board may turn over, and Jill, you're absolutely right. It would be great to have a document that says, this is what this board thought. And if another board...
It's really beyond that. You see what I'm saying? It's fine for all to espouse our views here. That's very helpful. But if you have a document that says, you continue to lay asphalt for parking or grounds for pickleball court, you can't reconcile that with more butterflies and, do you know what I'm trying to say? So that's what I would like to see.
That's the whole idea of doing a study to, to try to put that all in perspective and have it in a, in a place so that future boards can at least look back and say, that board in 2025 had this document, and we agree with it and should expand on it. Or, you know, this board doesn't want to go in that direction. This board wants to go in another direction.
But I think it's harder to say that when you have some type of factual document. If you say, oh, people in 2025 thought it was a great idea to do X, and now it's 2035 and we don't, it's a little different than, oh, the physical parameters of the park, the environmental damage that might be caused, the concerns of neighbors and the tax, you know, impacts on their home or the value of their homes. You know what I'm saying? Concrete things. Because opinions are great, but facts are what matter. So that's my opinion.
So it's beyond our opinions, it's finding out what the opinions of the residents would be.
Not really, no. It's finding out what this park, because I've lived in Ryberg a long time, it looks totally different now than it ever did. It has many more moving parts, we have many more employees. And if we continue in this vein, I'm not certain that that's wise. If you present to me something that this park has endless capacity and really only needs X amount of green space, then I will, I will gladly pull that from somewhere.
Jill, I don't think anybody's suggesting we eliminate any green space whatsoever.
Where, where you going to put the pickleball?
That, that would be, that's one thing that is, that is obviously not finding a lot of favor at this point.
But we also talked about another piece of playground equipment. Does that not go on green space? And we've also, I mean, we've talked about many, many ideas that would require subtracting green space. That's just facts, guys.
Now, for nothing, when we redid this park, we sent out to the community what they wanted in this park. And to me, I don't see why we can't do that again. Let the community decide, just like we do at the playground, like we do at the pavilion, what we do at the mansion. A lot of the stuff we did here was what the people wanted. And I don't see, I know, no disrespect, I don't know why we have to go for 40 grand. When we, what it cost us last time? 3,000 maybe for all the, for all the mailers and everything? I think we should make a list what the, what the board would like to see and see if the people want it.
I think that's completely irrelevant to what I personally have concerns about. What you want, what I want, that's great. I have nothing but respect for what your vision of the park is versus mine, which is clearly different. But somebody has to tell me, oh, actually, you could pave this whole thing and make it a second playland because some of the rides over there are closing up. That'd be great, it's revenue for the town, people would love it, people with little kids. I want some facts, some scientific information about what the park can take. How about the deeds and the grants? And I don't, I don't happen to really know all of that and how that might restrict us or future legislations.
Then why did we do that when we did the park? When we remodeled everything?
That's a great question, Tommy.
Because we did it, we did it, we let the people, we asked the people, and the people responded, and that's what we got. We did what the people wanted. Plain and simple.
I think that's a gross oversimplification, but okay.
When I listened to what Gary said, and it seemed to me that that's very different from, this is basically a public opinion survey, a user survey, that I think, this is a different thing, to have someone with expertise in the environmental area, the land use area, what would stress the land, what would fit in with the land, it's more technical. And I think that as the board, that it would be fair enough to, to say to someone, okay, Gary mentioned a number of things. Here, here are a menu of things. Do they fit? What is the environmental impact? How do they impact the overall feel of the place? And that doesn't frankly have to be driven by, you know, 17 people or 47 people saying we want a pickleball court.
Right, and listening sessions and, that's not what I think we should be spending money on.
As the, dare I say it, leaders of the community, that's a process that this board could drive. And what Gary, the questions that Gary was asking seem to me to be questions that are for some sort of technical consultant, somebody you could say, gee, guys, you had a whole litany of things, a butterflies and hummingbirds and this and that. And if, you know, what would be, if we wanted those things, would it, how would we do it? What would the impact be on the rest of the park? That's different from saying, let's ask a bunch of people to take a survey. And I, I say that respectfully. Unfortunately, you're listening to a discussion that...
No, I just, no, I completely understand.
Maybe we should have this discussion of what, we asked you to put the, by the way, this looks great.
Yes.
For what it's intended for. And I think Jill has raised the point, the question is what this project is, what the board collectively is looking for. Because it's certainly not what Jill is looking for.
And the several constituents who voted for us or did or didn't vote for us but live here and have concerns and don't make the time to go on Facebook or come here. So I think I have to speak for them because I know for a fact that I'm not alone.
That's your job.
So I may be alone when I'm here, but I am not alone out in the...
And I, and I agree with some of your points. I'm sorry.
They could also feel free to call me anytime.
I'm sure that's true. I'm sure that's true. But I'm, I'm not the supervisor, but I'm a good resource for the people that live here.
And I do agree with a lot of your points, but there's some things I don't agree on. But that's, you know...
I would expect that, yeah.
Yes, and I respect, and I respect what you do. You know, it's no disrespect between the two of us, it's just that you have your views and I have mine, and some are together and some aren't.
And honestly, the reason to have this discussion and not to vote on this today is to let the community listen to this discussion and let them come back and call Gary or email Jill. And let's come back and discuss it in the next meeting.
That was the whole purpose of this. And one reason I did not jump in while everybody was cross-talking is because I thought it was a very productive discussion to get things out on the table. The one thing that I know about this council is that we all want Crawford Park to be a highly successful park for the park users and the residents. And it is our job to try to determine what that success looks like. And we obviously, from this discussion, if anybody watches it on, on cable or on the internet, going to our webpage, they will see that there are different views. And our job is to coalesce those views, possibly with the guidance of a professional such as Sarah and Neil, and formulate a plan going forward as to what we would like to do or not do. That's what the purpose of, of discussion is. You know, we have five people sitting up here. We have many people, hopefully many people watching. We have our staff who take care of the grounds and the building, and they have their ideas. They, they see what goes on, and they see what problem areas there are. And they also see what potential benefits can accrue. They have their own ideas as well as us. So all of this coming together, we'll formulate something.
Basically, this plan, Neil, is not set in stone. It is mutable if we go forward with it.
Neil, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, you know, initially, we actually had thought about including landscape architecture in this, which would, that would be kind of a, but that would be, kind of end up being a different proposal. It would include the, the visioning piece with public and all the engagement, but it would probably get more towards the kind of the scientific understanding that, that was expressed today, so...
I take it that your firm has the expertise, for example, if the assignment was, the board has five or six thoughts, items, potential projects. Can you evaluate those projects for us? We'll talk about public participation later, kind of a, more of a feasibility study to see, given if the parameters were, the concerns that have been expressed about the environmental impact, et cetera, et cetera, on, on some mix of those projects. I assume that's something that you could undertake.
Well, that's the thing, we don't have landscape architect, architect in-house. So we had pondered the idea of working with one, but, you know, we don't currently have that in-house.
Okay.
Ruby, are there comments?
Whatever. Thank you, Neil. I'd like to hear at this point if there are any comments from the public. Do you have anybody on Facebook?
Um, there's a comment on Zoom. I don't know, can I read it?
Yep.
Uh, the first question was, is this a proposal that the town requested? Or are you proposing the use of your firm to prepare a concept plan that has already been determined for the stakeholders you propose to reach? That was from ten minutes ago, so I have to answer that.
Is there an answer to that?
Yes, Carmen.
All right. This is, this is the, Carmen, this is the beginning of a formulation of a plan. I requested a proposal from H and H that we are discussing. It's obviously an item for discussion. And before anything comes to fruition, we're going to have community input. And I think you've heard a lot of robust discussion from here about what we should be looking at.
Mr. Murphy, you are going to be thrown to the ground and handcuffed. It violates the very foundational idea of this country and it absolutely will come back in boomerang.
Sounds like Senator Deere being arrested.
Could be.
Is there anyone in the audience? And actually, Debbie, I'm looking at you because when we had the NYU grouping, you had a lot of commentary.
You want to come up?
Yeah, you gotta look at the podium.
Debbie Friedman from Rybrook. I have been listening to the conversation and I think the premise of even hiring a company to move forward with this is that the park needs to be improved. And so the conversation is all, how can we improve the park? How can we change the park? What can we do for the park? And if that's the question that you're asking, then you're going to go down the path of add this, add this, do that, do this. But it doesn't allow for, it, it doesn't easily allow for people to, to make the response, I love the park just the way it is and we don't need to make any changes. So I think the original premise here is, we need to change the park and we need to do more and more and more, and we need to make it better and better and better. And I think that there are probably a lot of people around who think that it's absolutely beautiful as it is. And I agree with a lot of what Jill said, that the, the piece that we're missing, and I understand that, that, I don't, H and H, is that what the firm is called? Did a great job based on the question that they, the assignment that they were given. My, my understanding is the assignment they were given, they did a great job coming back with how they would approach that. But it doesn't really allow for leaving the park as is. And again, I think if you're going to go to an event in the park, that's a big event, where there's all these people coming to an event, and you're going to ask those people, what do you want? You want to add pickleball? You wanted this? You're going to get that response. This would be great. That would be great. Everything would be great. But everything that gets added in this park changes the feel of the park and the overall. And for a lot of people, I think, in our community, this park is still a place, the only place left in Rybrook, really, that's open land. It's not that big. It's not that much land. We're not talking about acres and acres and acres and acres, where if we take a few acres out of, you know, five hundred to, to build all these things, we still have four hundred and whatever it is, ninety-five acres left. You know, we're just talking still about a very, very small area, and it's the only open space that we have left in our community. And I think that a lot of people come in on their own, quietly, walking their dog, just getting away from everything and having a peaceful walk. And when you're surveying people coming to a big event, you're not going to touch on them and get their opinion. And those may be the people also that are going to be potentially the most impacted by the constant activity and event that's going on in the park. And likewise, a lot of the neighbors that live around the park, who I think enjoy the quiet and know that there's quiet. So when there are events here that are going on with loud music, it is heard in the surrounding streets and the surrounding areas. And I think we have to be conscious of the neighbors that also live near the park as well. So that's just some of my thoughts about...
But I, I think that you touch on something and I, I'm not dismissing it at all. That, um, one of the alternatives is to do nothing. It's an alternative.
Absolutely. But when you propose a project like this and, and you're going to spend forty thousand dollars to put together a plan for how to change the park, that gets very, very lost. And the other thing that was not part of any of this discussion is how this land was deeded to the town. And I know that a lot of people, their assumption is, they can't do that in the park because of the way the deed is written. That it was written to allow for kind of this open space and, and not to be built up. And I have looked at the deed. It's been a while, so I haven't looked at it in a while. But I do think that there's the feeling out there, well, they can't do that and people don't know. And then what happens, because we know that people aren't paying attention, people pay attention. Often they hear about it when we're too far down the road and then they're going to be upset and angry, right? They don't necessarily hear about it at this stage of the process. So I applaud you for trying to find ways to bring that conversation in and to hear people's points of view before you go too far down. But if you're going to spend forty thousand dollars to do a study of what you could do to improve or change the park and put together a five, ten, twenty-year vision for what this park can be, you've already made the decision that keeping it as is is not what you want to do. Because if you wanted to keep it as a board collectively, if you really collectively thought that the best thing to do would be to keep it as is, maintain it as is, continue with the planting and the gardening and the open space and the quiet and maybe get an owl or two back in here. If, if that's what you wanted to do, I find it hard to understand why you'd spend forty thousand dollars to commission a study. So that's just my, my perspective.
I, I value your perspective. I just disagree with the fact that you, that you, you're assuming that the purpose of the study is to do something. Purpose is to determine what, if anything, should be done. And one of the things that may be done is nothing at all.
I understand, but...
My feeling, and I, I purposely mentioned things like honeybees and hummingbirds and butterflies and things like that, and improving gardens, because I think tho, those things are very valuable to do. Personally, I wouldn't know how to go, how to go about doing it or where to put them, and that would require a further study. I don't want to just say, let's put a, you know, let's, let's get some honeybees over here and make honey.
Right. You're, you're amplifying my point, which is that kind of expert opinion about the feasibility of A, B, and C, given the constraints that we want to have or the lack of, you know, impact. That's not a survey of people who are here on Sunday afternoon.
No, I, Randy, I, I agree with you. That's why we're having this discussion, to determine the way forward. Because I don't think, I don't think any park is static, stays the way it is. You know, you have to, I hate to use the word improve, but want to do things to make it even better than it is. I don't know what those things are. Flower gardens, bringing in possibly some specimen trees that are, that are native.
I mean, look at the repaving project that we did in the last couple of years. You know, that's something that had to be created, right? Like, that is, that is a change. That's, that was an improvement to the park. So that was people who were like, I'm falling as I walk my dog.
The, the, yeah, the friends put in the, the garden dedicated to George. We have a garden dedicated to Bobby Morabito. We have a garden, we have the sunken garden where many weddings take place. Should there be more of that? More and different kinds of gardens, different kinds of flowers? And of course, you know, one of the participants in any discussion would have to be the friends of, of Crawford Park.
I mean, we have a marshy park to the great lawn. There are things that you could do with that if we knew what to do with that.
Yeah. So I'm not, I'm not just suggesting that we need to have, you know, oh, we need to have all of these activities. No, we don't need to put basketball courts or pickleball courts or tennis courts or golf driving range. We don't need any of that stuff.
I mean, our lenses that this could be in space.
But the question is, what should be done, if anything? And I keep coming back to paraphrase you, Debbie, if anything, if anything. Because in many circumstances, we need to do nothing.
Counsel has a point.
Yes.
I see him there. You, you want to, you want to speak into the microphone, Jim?
Sure, sure. So Debbie brought up the issue of the deed. Actually, the deed can be very helpful. The deed is actually the original guidepost for all of you. This is your starting point, and it could at some point be your ending point. The deed is very explicit about what you can do, what you should, what should be done with this park in perpetuity. Just read it. It's very, the language actually is, is very clear.
And people don't know what's in the deed. Can't tell you how many times someone's like, well, why don't we put in a swimming pool?
I happen to know.
The deed should be someplace pretty public. I'm sure it is on the website, but...
The, the, the history of Crawford Park, and we did a study of this when, when I was a trustee in Rybrook. The reason that Crawford Park was not given to the village of Rybrook when Rybrook was created is because of the deed. And the deed specifically left it to the town of Ry. Every other park that the town owned, Pine Ridge Park, Garibaldi Park, Meadow, I keep forgetting the name, the park right, right, right next, right next to Crawford, and Ryan Hills Park, all were given to the village of Rybrook, but not Crawford. Because Crawford Park was deeded directly to the town of Ry. And one of the reasons that Edna Crawford deeded it to the town of Ry is because she enjoyed watching the children play in her backyard. So the fact that we have play areas, playgrounds, and fields comports exactly with the will of Edna Crawford.
And it, and it reads as follows, "All of the premises shall be used and maintained by the town in perpetuity as a public park for public recreation primarily of an outdoor nature, and then there are certain exceptions." So you, I think you have the luxury and, and the good fortune of having a document that kind of gives you an outline, and it gives you the parameters, right?
And, and there is a, a section, Jeff didn't read it, that is dedicated actually for municipal use. The park right, right next to Rid Street is designated for municipal use so that the town could actually build a structure. I don't have any intention of doing that, by the way. But, but Jeff is right. It lays out, it lays out the parameters of what it can be used for.
And it's, it's very helpful focusing-wise, not only with act, with, you know, with the stakeholders, with the friends, with the parkgoers, with constituents. So when you talk to people, if you familiarize yourself generally with this language, you know, you can frame the conversation. I think it's actually very helpful and it gets you out of this morass of what you, you know.
All right. All right. Let us end this discussion. Neil, thank you very much. I hope that you're not too put off by this discussion of the board.
Uh, no, it was always quite interesting. So if we can be helpful, that's great. If we can't, then we hope there's something else that we can be helpful on. So, you know, we're happy to be on in the next meeting if you'd like us to be on and let me know, or let Sarah, Sarah and I know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Bye.
What was that, Ruby, what was that last comment? The comment from the resident? Did I answer that?
Um, she wrote another comment that says, as a member of the community and a member of the friends of Crawford Park, as well as in the development, implementation, and unification, this proposed budget is heavy on public relations and engagement and not a feasibility study for the future of the park. I think that the expense should be earmarked to address border cultural issues that we currently have in part.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. Feel free to approach either myself or Debbie or Ruby for further consultation.
Unfortunately, I have a work call. I still try to make a living once in a while at eight o'clock tonight.
We'll be done.
Do you need a vote? Or are we voting on anything? Do you need me for anything?
No, no. Yeah, one more vote. We have one vote on, yeah, we have two votes. We're going to do that now. We'll be done in ten minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Bringing up the request from Portchester Council for the Arts for 2025 summer camp. They wrote us a letter. I think you're all advised of this, where they, Portchester Council for the Arts has requested that their fee be reduced to no more than three thousand dollars for the summer, because otherwise the program would not be able to exist. Comments?
They're also on Zoom.
Okay. I'm in agreement.
The screen name is Portchester Council for the Arts.
It, it seems to me to be taking this letter at face value, something that we should agree to.
Yes.
I, I agree also.
May I, may I have a motion in a second to reduce the fee for Portchester Council for the Arts summer camp to three thousand dollars?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Go ahead, please, huh?
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yeah.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Definitely, yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. And a resolution to award a contract for video and audio consulting to Anthony, I hope I say the word name, Gather's, of the scene video. Debbie sent a memo to the council regarding this. Apparently, our good friend Jack, who has been working on the audio/video portion for our meetings, both here and Rytown Park. He is, I should say, gainfully employed in the assessor's office, where he's been for the better part of a year, doing a very wonderful job. And he would like to relinquish his responsibility as audio/video technician or whatever where, where his title may be. And our company has recommended Anthony Gather's to take his place.
Can I just ask a question before we vote?
Yes, of course.
Okay. What were we paying Jack? Because this is three hundred and fifteen dollars per meeting.
Yes, we were not paying Jack that much. And this will be in addition to the budget.
Why weren't we paying Jack?
I don't know the answer to that.
And, and we're going to pay somebody, but we're getting it done for free and now we're going to pay somebody?
Well, Jack was salaried, so...
I don't know how to do it.
Jack went from being entertainer like this, and I think it was two hundred and something per meeting, and then he started working part-time. Like, he became part of Vic's team and now he's part of the assessor's team. So it just wrapped into a growing job. And actually, it's one of our examples of promoting from within.
Okay.
So we're just paying another hundred dollars than what we used to pay one of our own employees?
We're paying more, yes. And we're going to have to do a budget modification to take account of that. It comes out to be three hundred and fif, well, actually, it's split between Rytown Park and town, so it's not that much.
Did we offer the three hundred and fifteen dollars to Jack, I would think, for supplemental income or something? Because he's done a wonderful job for so many years. I just wonder why we wouldn't want to...
Yeah, I know.
I think he wants a life, though, outside of work. Maybe.
How old is he? You don't get a life outside of work until you're like...
Guys, how many hours?
Stop, hold it, stop, timeout. Gary, this is a question.
How many hours, how many hours a month or a year are we talking about? That seems to be the budgetary question. X times three hundred and fifteen.
Well, it's basically for...
It, it wouldn't matter because it's per meeting. So if the meeting is four hours or six hours, he's getting paid the same. My question...
So it's twelve, twelve town meetings and twelve park meetings, twenty-four meetings.
Plus our budget sessions if we...
Perfect.
Plus budget sessions if we video them, correct? Public budgetary session.
I don't think, because we don't have the same video for that. I do not want to get into personal discussions about what Jack would or would not do. That's for executive session. We have before us...
Can we table it till the next meeting and we can have an executive session before? I, I would not be comfortable.
Well, I don't think Jack, I don't think Jack is going to be taking the job. I think Jack is out of it. He wants to work in the assessor's office. So I think the only question is whether we're gonna hire somebody, and if that somebody is Anthony.
I'm gonna say, based on just public relations experience, it, 315 for given meetings is competitive rate.
Okay.
At this point in time, you know, six years after we hired Jack.
Just.
It just seems like an odd set of circumstances. I would prefer to make an informed decision about what I'm voting on. That's all.
Well, this could be.
I did receive a very brief memo, and.
This could be, my, this is my suggestion. Let's go forward with this hire. This is not a civil service job. And we can discuss it in the future. I mean, he's working.
Are we signing a contract with him for a year or a set time? If we have one meeting, can we change our mind at any point?
Yes, we can.
With notice, or?
Well, we always, we always give notice, but I'm saying that there's no set contract.
This way we can actually have video recording in our next town meeting and the next Rytown Park.
Just, just FYI, I have discussed with Debbie our entire video setup as to whether we need as many people as we do, whether we need different kinds of equipment, how much that would cost. We're gonna be looking into that, because right now we have five people working.
Right.
These meetings. And one of the reasons is because we have a hybrid meeting. Very few communities have the kind of meetings we do, where people can come in and out via Zoom, where, where we're doing all kinds of things that other communities do not do.
Hey, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I do have to go. I do have a professional obligation after this. I didn't know the meeting was gonna run over. But it seems to me that based on what you said, Gary, that we can do this. There's no long-term commitment. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, and we need someone for the next meeting, and the, the park will need someone for the next meeting. So, and Jill says, based on her professional experience, this is a commercial.
Pam.
Oh, Pam said that.
Pam did.
Pam said that.
Yes.
Yes.
PR person.
Wait, I'm looking. It says Jill Axelrod, right there.
You see that?
Yeah.
I like the expertise to know that that very specific amount is actually.
Okay.
We have fun at our meetings.
You, you, you.
There, double.
Oh, look, you're a double.
I'm a double.
Okay. Based on that, you're, and I'm sure you're right, given the nature of your work, it seems to me, given that it's not a long, necessarily a long-term commitment, and he does seem to be a qualified person, and Debbie has recommended it, I, can I make a motion?
You may.
That we go forward with this gentleman.
Okay, motion. Who's second, please?
I'll second.
Please call the roll, hope.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yep.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yep.
Councilperson Nardi?
No.
Yes.
Supervisors, I guess.
Can I just say, I think that's the first.
Split vote we've had in a long time.
And I think it's good to have one once in a while. It's good that we all agree on everything most of the time.
I don't agree on this.
And this gives us a couple of months if we find, once again, competitive bids, right?
He should be offered that money. He should have been offered that. Jack should have been offered that.
He should.
I don't see.
This is not a vote against Anthony, this is a vote in favor of Jack.
Yes.
No, and I don't.
I'd like to put on the record that we're all very grateful to Jack for his hard work for many years.
And by the way, I think.
And his continued hard work for the town.
If, if, if Jack does want to work and not live.
Right.
A better life or whatever, then we've said, this is a temporary arrangement. And if the young man wants to do it, since he was doing a great job, I think we can just go back to him.
And offer him the same rate, and offer it as something on top of his salary position at the assessor's office. And let's have a solution for next month's meeting in case Jack wants to high off into number land for the rest of his life.
Guys, I really don't wanna discuss personal matters.
Okay, yes. Good night.
Randy, thank you.
Good night, Green.
Good night, Green. So I think it's really big difference. It's like a real democracy. It's not like the party.
Don't worry, I'll talk to Tommy, I'll talk to Tommy later and have him change it, so. Just kidding, Tom.
I know.
That ends our resolutions. Reports, African-American Cemetery, Juneteenth. Pam, do you wanna do this, or?
No, I think this is Tommy.
No.
Tommy, wanna do it? And Gary wants to do it.
Ruby, Ruby should do it.
Ruby!
Pam keeps listening to me.
I will say that I have the press release set for, for Saturday, so that's all taken care of. I got that end done.
Gary, did you look at the press release? No? Okay, that was my one job.
I not only looked at the press.
Because Ruby's done most of the work. She really has. She does, she's phenomenal. She does so much of the stuff.
Will hopefully appear.
She's excellent.
Okay, so you.
She is.
Quietly.
I have, we put up the little graphic here. The event is on June 21st. It starts at 10:00 AM. Um, it starts with a commemoration. We have a couple of different speakers, and we actually have high school and middle school volunteers to read different, I know last year they did a letter, actually don't know exactly what they're doing, but they did a letter, um, you know, from someone who is buried at the cemetery. So sort of connecting the history to the place where everyone's going to be. And then there is a service project that involves cleaning off the headstones, which we've done in past years as well. And then this year, we're also using the ground piercing radar survey that we got a grant for. And the firm has come back and marked where all the graves are. And then we're going to be putting small wooden monuments, and where each of those.
Markers, I think.
Markers, yeah, thank you. Um, where each of the unmarked graves are. So it's a two-part service project this year.
Great. We're gonna have several speakers. I believe the main speaker is gonna be the county executive. And we'll have the usual, I believe our usual elected officials will probably be there. Most of them, okay, will be there. We've sent invitations to lots of people. Everybody's welcome. And I think it should be a really nice event, and hopefully it won't rain.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
There is a rainy day.
Yes, Sunday, the next day.
Yeah, but hopefully we'll have it on this day's schedule, because somehow people sometimes can't make it on the adjourn date. So, all right. Anybody, anybody comment on, on that?
Yeah, I wanna thank you for all the work you put into it, because you really, you know, we have our meetings, and you're taking the notes, and you're moving with this stuff. So.
Thank you.
You do a really fantastic job.
Not only that, it's June, so Ruby is doing that for Juneteenth, for Echo Fest and Pride on top of her daily activities. So this has been an action-packed month.
She doesn't do anything during the day, you know.
No, 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 no.
I just, no, no, seriously.
And these are all after-hour meetings.
I'm always on, I'm always on top of her. Ruby, can you do this? How about that?
Ruby, can you take a vacation day after June, please?
She gets everything done. Thank you.
Yes, no, but thank you. You've done so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna stand there?
I have.
Got more?
I have Carla's report.
Oh, you're gonna do Carla?
She's unable to make it.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm skipping ahead, but.
Sorry.
While you're there.
So the village of Rybrook and Portchester, first installment 2020, for the 2025 taxes are due by June 30th. Uh, everyone should have received a bill in the mail at this point, but the bills are also accessible on the town website. To submit this payment, you can use, you can mail it to 222 Grace Church Street, use the lockbox in front of the building at 222 Grace Church, or come into the office. But the fastest and easiest way to pay your tax bill is online. There is a $1.50 fee for processing an e-check and a 2.35% fee with a debit or credit card. And an important note is that the tax department is no longer using the lockbox in New Jersey that they were using in previous years. Uh, all bills need to come to 222 Grace Church Street. And just to check, if you have your payment set up with your bank or mortgage company, make sure that they change the address as well. And Carla, thanks everyone for their cooperation through this transition, and hopes that everyone has a wonderful summer.
Thank you, Ruby. Good job.
Why choose you?
Now she's becoming a collection officer, too. Crawford Park, I see Candy sitting back there. Do you have any report? You don't have to have a report.
Um, I do have a report, but the only, I don't know how to access the report, right? So this is the growth so far. Uh, it's a little higher than last year. With the waived fees, we have a little less than this year, uh, than last year of 2024. We don't have the teachers from Portchester coming in as often as they used to. Before, they used to use the great hall, now they're using the activity rooms upstairs. So I think that's reduced the waived fees. For.
That's a good thing for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're using, they're either using the bridal room, they're using the activity room one or two. Sometimes they spread themselves out a little bit to have smaller group sessions with the teachers when they have their meetings. So they like being upstairs more now than downstairs. Unless if they have 50 or more, then they do use the great hall for their sessions.
What was the activity here tonight?
Um, right now, we have an adult choir group, and this is their end-of-the-year session that they're having. So that's why they're using the piano downstairs. So it's a group of eight women that, most nights they'll bring their instruments and keyboards and practice in Activity Room Two. Today, since they're having their family members come watch their performance, that's why they're downstairs in the hall. And then we also have the Cub Scouts, or the Scouts, outside having their ceremony.
Great.
Um, speaking of, how did you enjoy sleeping outside?
I did not like it. I don't mind being outside, but I don't like being cold. And I was freezing. And I was waking up every hour, on the hour. I had everybody's blanket, so it was.
What was this for?
The, we had the Rybrook Cub Scouts campout that they have every year out on the field. It was a smaller group this year than last year. There was probably 20 parents with their kids doing the campout. And so the kids had to help the parent set up the tent. Luckily, we set up the tent just as it started to pour. So that was pretty bad. But the kids had, every child had sopping wet shoes throughout the whole thing.
Sounds like fun.
I mean, they had fun. They were outside, they were hanging out with each other, they had their dinner. After their dinner, then they had their ceremony with their little pins that they were getting. And then for breakfast, they had a really, like, continental type of breakfast. So it didn't really last long, like last year. Because last year it did take longer for Charlie and myself to clean up. We spent about like an hour and a half cleaning. This time, it maybe took us half an hour to clean, so.
And thank you for that on behalf of Team Echo Fest.
I mean, we had to do the transition quickly, because you guys were coming in to use the pavilion, so.
You wanna stay warm, get yourself a good mummy bag, you'll be fine.
Well, that's for next year. Well, Liam has to start doing more campouts. So I'm like, I'm getting the little warmers and.
You just need a mummy bag for at night, you'll be fine.
I mean, if it's not 80 degrees for me, I'm freezing. I, I can't. I feel a breeze, I'm like, oh, God.
Yeah, the next morning you look like you could just have gone back to sleep.
So, um, for this year so far from May, we've had 285 events. That includes our public events. It includes the events that have happened by rentals with municipalities and also our sponsored classes. This weekend, on Saturday, we will have our start-off summer concert with Mike T. and the Jam Show acoustic. So if it rains outside, they'll be inside. So we'll have it like bar-style with high tops and low tops for people to sit inside if it does rain.
And that's, and it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, they're.
Mike, Mike T.'s really good.
He doesn't stop. He will continue playing the full, full hour. He'll keep, he'll wanna go, and it's like 10:30, and he's like, can I go? I'm like, you gotta get out of here.
Mike, Mike loves playing. He loves to play.
That's my report.
Thank you, Candy. Much appreciated.
And honestly, it's, it's fun to see that you're doing innovative things partnership-wise. My Pilates, I guess Club Pilates is coming here next weekend to do Pilates in the park, which I thought was really kind of fun and different of a partnership, so.
Yeah, we haven't had a outdoor group in a long time. So it'll be interesting to see if she actually likes being outside. I think she's gonna be on the grass.
Yeah, I think so, but. I thought that was great. I was like, look at, like you said.
Well, she was also interested at the beach, but she wants to try it here first and then see how it goes.
Cool. It's great.
All right, great, thank you, Candy.
You're welcome.
And by the way, also huge kudos to Candy, who I understand you're helping out a lot with Rytown Park, so you were split.
We have a, we have a new management model.
And she's also helping out with the car show, too, that we're planning. So she's another one that really puts a heart and soul in everything, too, just like Ruby. The two of them together, the great assets to the town. Thank you.
Financials. You have anything to report, Debbie?
Just the.
Other than the audit?
Right, so you want it, you want it completed, as you know, because I just submitted it, and it's earliest it's been in a number of years. So, which is good, because we can provide the audit reports to our financial advisor for debt service reporting as well. The, the tax receivables were, I, were sent late to Hope today, because the meeting is a week earlier. But you mean? They're uploaded now, okay. So there was one in RIM property that paid in May of '25. So there's three in RIM properties from the class of '24. There's only one left from the class of '23. We did make whole the school taxes at the end of April. The outstanding school taxes as of May is about 1.2 million. The county in town for 2025 is a little high. It's about 300,000 higher than the prior year. So we're, we're monitoring that, but there were some issues with the lockbox and things like that. So that's why the changes being made by the tax receiver. But overall, we've, we've made whole on all our taxes, with the exception of the 2025 county in town, which we will do in October. So we do have a strong fund balance, and we do have a good cash reserves that's earning interest. So we're, we're in good shape. And even though we did have a, a loss in the '24 year, that was budgeted for and planned for, because we knew we were taking some revenue hits for mortgage tax and, and some other areas as well.
Yeah, we're gonna have to plan for the mortgage tax for next year and figure out, figure out where that should go.
Yeah, we'll be getting the first half within the next week. Yeah, we'll be getting the first half within the next week, so we're gonna, to measure the, the...
We got a payment today from the county. What was that for?
I believe it was mortgage tax, but I, I, I got that notification late, and I couldn't confirm it, but I believe that was the first half of the mortgage tax, which we resume, receive in June fifteenth. It may have been notification. The second half comes December fifteenth. So, we're going, I'm gonna look at the last couple of years for the first half payment, compare it to what we received last year to see where we are. We did lower the budget for, for twenty-five for mortgage tax to reflect the downside for that, but...
At least we don't have to worry about sales tax going down.
Yeah, that's not...
Like the county does.
That's the counties.
We don't, we don't, we don't get sales tax.
But, you know, good, no news or quiet news is good when it comes to financials. We are in good shape.
All right, great. Thank you, Dave. Jeffrey?
I have to report.
Yes, you do.
I do.
You have to follow up on his in-rent. We have, we have four properties in-rent. One, one is gonna apparently be sold, and one that's in bankruptcy is apparently gonna be paying their taxes.
That's correct.
And then there will be two.
It hasn't happened yet, so I'm happy with it.
We're just prognosticating. All right, Hope?
My report has been submitted.
And your big news, your big news.
And a reminder about the county mobile shredder will be at two twenty-two Grace Church Street this Saturday, the fourteenth, from ten to one.
Okay.
And that's it.
Our next meeting is July seventeenth. Does anybody have anything to say? Comment, comments from the council people?
Always, we always have comments. I just wanna say, we are super lucky to live in the town of Rye, and we are super lucky to serve the constituents of Rye, especially in times like we're in. I wanna thank Crawford for working with Color Blast to give them a home for their related Holly Festival. I know that you did, you know, you made concessions there, and that is such a great sign of inclusion and, you know, embracing community. We haven't talked yet about Pride. This year's Pride was fabulous. It was wonderful. It was, Ruby can back me up here, filled with families with young kids all day long. It was pouring rain, pouring rain, pouring rain, but just exactly the warm-hearted family celebration we wanted, and once again, very inclusive and very loving of the people who are there. And then Eco Fest or Echo Fest, and these are things that aren't being supported on the national scale right now, and I really value the members of this council, and the supervisor, and the staff, and everyone who comes together to make Rye such a great place to live. So, that's just my heartfelt thanks, that we live in a lovely haven in a difficult time.
Thank you, Candy. Joe, anything? Tommy?
Yes, I'd like to see people come to our Juneteenth celebration at the African American Cemetery on Saturday, the twenty-first, from ten to twelve. And also, everybody have a safe Fourth of July. We'll see you on the seventeenth of July.
All right, Fourth of July is coming. Portchester's gonna have the fireworks as usual. I did not hear, do you know if Rite Town, if Playland is doing fireworks?
Sure, I haven't heard about that one.
Debbie, have you heard?
I don't know.
Ruby?
I'm not.
All right. I will, I will make a call and see what their plans are, because that affects Rite Town Park tremendously, whether they have it or not.
Yeah.
Ken Jenkins will let you know in Juneteenth.
And have we given Barley full control of our beach, or are we gonna have our beach open for residents to enjoy?
No, no, it'll be, it'll be, Debbie worked with them, the residents, if you have a pass, you get on the beach.
Great. Thank you. And thank Debbie.
The Barley, they, they have to be self-contained within their area.
Okay.
Of course, if there's no fireworks, gonna have much less of a crowd.
We can still have picnics. Also, do we know the county is doing the bus again, like the free bus?
I don't think they are.
Okay.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven fifty-nine.